To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment? Kevin, any public comment? No? Okay. We will move on to our public hearing for our FY twenty-four or twenty-five. FY twenty-five tax classification. So this is, I'm opening a public hearing. The Select Board for the Town of Cohasset will conduct a public hearing under Chapter Twenty, Section Fifty-Six, as amended by the Chapter Seventy-Nine Acts of nineteen eighty-three, on Tuesday, November nineteenth, at seven oh five P. M. At ninety-one Sawyer Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. Public can attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.gov in the Meetings, Hearings, Notices of the Calendar section located at the bottom of the front page of the website. Purpose of the hearing will be to review the issue of allocating the local property tax among the five property classifications for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The Select Board and the Board of Assessors will provide information regarding the various policy decisions available. All interested persons and/or parties wishing to be heard will be afforded the opportunity to be heard at this time. Come up.
Yeah, my name is Rachel Carlisle, the Director of Assessing for the Town of Cohasset. So I believe you got a notice from Chris. Typically, I would present, my values have been approved and the growth has been approved, but we're still waiting on a few numbers. The stabilization fund, I believe you're taking care of tonight later, and some levy, the estimated levy. So we have decided to hold off on the presentation, so, and we recommend that you keep the hearing open until a further date.
Good. Do you have a date?
December third, I believe, is your next meeting.
Yes.
Idea, that would be ideal. Anything after that would be probably too much of crunch to get the numbers done and the billing.
Okay, so December third is fine?
Yeah, I think that should be okay. As I mentioned earlier today, the D O R is asking for Select Board to formally continue the special stabilization on the road for FY twenty-five. You already done that for FY twenty-six with the increase. We were initially under the impression that wasn't necessary. The client with them yesterday said, no, you do, and they need to have that in place before they can do their remaining calculations. So they're usually going to present.
Okay.
The tax allocation hearing.
Okay. So do I need a motion to open the hearing?
It's all your fault.
It's all my fault. You can blame me if you want. It's okay.
Do I need a motion to open it and continue it until December third? Okay, can I have a motion to open the public hearing for the tax allocation and offer a continuance until December third?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
L M R, aye.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the third.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have Boarding Committee appointments. We have three appointments for the Cohasset Common Historic District Commission. Do we have any of the applicants online, Kevin? No, okay, the first is Alex VanderWiel for a three-year term as an at-large member. I believe this is a reappointment, but not a consecutive reappointment. I believe he served before.
That's correct.
Okay. Joy Schiffman is also applying for a three-year term as an at-large member, and that is a reappointment. And Roger Maroney is a three-year term as a resident of the district, and this is a new application. So unless we have any comments or questions about their applications, I see none. Can I have a motion to appoint?
I'm gonna move to point oh three.
I was just going to make like a motion to approve Mr. VanderWiel, Ms. Schiffman, and Mr. Maroney for their three-year appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
L M R, aye.
Thank you. So, Chris, your office will notify them?
Yes, actually, yeah, yes, and then they'll be getting your appointment notifications now from.
Okay, thank you. We thank you for their volunteering for this commission. Okay, next up, we have the request for the story walk on the common. For the first ones, Paul Pratt Memorial Library.
Hello, I'm Bronwyn Nelson, Library Director. The Historical Society could not send anyone along, so I'm going to speak for them as well. And I was asked to do a little brief background of the story walks. I've just wrote up a few notes. It's a movable display that features up to twenty-two signposts in which book pages or other visual displays can be inserted. The story walk is a trademarked entity that was created by Anne Ferguson and Montpelier Vermont in collaboration with the Kellogg Hubbard Library. The set was purchased by the Paul Pratt Library through an authorized vendor in early twenty twenty-one as a way to safely engage the public during the pandemic. The bulk of the cost was funded by a grant from the Cohasset Cultural Council with additional funds from the Friends of the Cohasset Library. It was originally conceived as a stationary exhibit, but the facilities department found it impossible to install the posts at the library due to the large amount of ledge beneath the surface. As a result, the story walk is a mobile exhibit with each post anchored in a stand that can be moved to different locations around town. It was most recently at the A S P Pumpkin Patch with a Halloween-themed book on display and has been installed on the common in the winter, in the wintertime since twenty twenty-one. The story walk has been a big success in the years since it was first introduced, and has helped the library meet some of the goals of their strategic plan, specifically increasing our all-ages programming and seeking out collaborations with other town departments. To that end, we hope to offer a Veterans Day display at the library, which may feature local veterans, among other projects. This year, we would like to install the story walk on the common with the library display beginning the week of December second through New Year's Day. And the book this year, we have an extra copy of it, is The Lights That Dance in the Night. It is about the Northern Lights, which we thought was really timely because it was so visible this year. After New Year's, the Cohasset Historical Society hopes to install an exhibit and keep it on the common through the end of February, and they're going to do a display of historical pictures and information about the common taken from this book, which has a whole section, the first chapter, I believe, is all about old historical features of the common, how it's changed, and that kind of thing. So they're really excited about it. I know it's a little unusual to have it there that much longer, but I think it'd be a great way to involve another department and serve the public. So hopefully you will consider and approve our request.
Great, thank you. Mr. Questions, Mr. Grady?
No, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Mr. Creighton?
Great idea, thank you for your work.
Absolutely.
Mr. Frog?
Echo the same, great idea. And people who go skating on the pond can certainly take up the skate, check out these.
Yeah, I think it'd be wonderful.
Exhibits, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Plex?
I agree with my colleagues, it's a great idea.
Great idea, yeah. Too bad we couldn't do like tours, like schedule things or?
Yeah, and there's so much we can do with it. It's actually was a positive that we couldn't have it just in one place, that we can move it everywhere. It's been much more visible that way. So you mentioned that the, the story walk is trademarked? I believe, yes, it's, yeah, yeah, we had, so that's why we had to purchase it through. So we couldn't just make our own similar kind of thing.
Okay.
So, and it says on it, story walk, you know, a little.
With the trademarked thing, okay. All right, but we don't end up paying royalty or license fees.
No.
It's part of the original purchase.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, great. Well, the, your, the book, the library book, the graphics look like it's gonna be fascinating for the kids to look at.
I'm gonna take that out tomorrow.
We have an extra copy.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the Paul Pratt Memorial Library story walk from December second, twenty twenty-four, through January one, twenty twenty-five? And the Cohasset Historical Society requests for historical photos on the story walk from January one, twenty twenty-five, through February, I would assume, twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing it on the common.
Okay, next up, and we are ahead of schedule. Town projects, is Michelle joining us online?
Sure.
Michelle, are you there? Okay.
She's on the big screen, but she's on the little.
Oh.
She looks like a big screen.
There you go, hi, Michelle.
Hi. Thank you. All right, so just, just a few quick updates on the town projects. I think we should start talking about Milliken first. Today, we had our first successful concrete pour. Three of the courts were poured today. The traffic wasn't as disruptive as we initially thought. The trucks began lining up at six A. M. with the first pour beginning at seven, and all trucks were off-site by noon. So it was a successful day for the pour. We are still scheduled next week on the twenty-sixth for the second pour to finish all of the courts. Maybe slightly more challenging than today because it's the courts on the backside by the fence, so the trucks will be lining up on the roadway. We did have two police details there today, which really helped with the traffic flow, and they will be back again next week, which will be great. The contractors plan to be on-site a little bit longer next week because of the plummeting temperatures, they have to make sure that the concrete cures at a certain temperature, therefore, they're prepared to put some radiant heating in and blankets on, and they'll work into the night to make sure that that happens. Any questions about that project?
Fantastic work, is all I'd say.
I think, I think they might be renamed the Michelle Leary Courts instead of Milliken Fields Courts.
I think it, it takes a village. I think everyone's helped out here. The town hall roof, so we received bids last week. We chose a vendor, the vendor has done work in town before. They just signed their notice of award as well as their contract documents. They are prepared to begin as soon as possible, they have to wait on some supplies. The roof came in under budget, and we are gonna have our pre-construction meeting the beginning of next week to formalize a date. They did indicate that they would like to work Saturday to Saturday and to minimize any disruptions, however, they did indicate that, you know, they would prefer that public wasn't coming in and out during their workday due to liability issues, but we'll have more information on that when we actually choose the dates and when they're working.
In order, if I have a question on that, for the bid, what did the bid come in at? So are people?
Yeah, so it came, it came in at ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
And we allocated?
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. And does the ninety-two, seven fifty have any contingency in it?
It, it does have a ten percent contingency in it.
Okay.
And what, the only number that you're not seeing is the number for the engineering, which is upwards of about twenty thousand dollars.
Mr. Grady?
Michelle, I just wanna say it's fantastic, you know, finally doing something with this building and it's done a hell of a job.
Thanks. I think everyone's excited to see something transpire at town hall.
They will be. Now we just get it out in the airwaves, right, Kevin?
There'd be a good drone shot while they're working. Mr. Creighton, do you have anything?
Well done, Michelle, and I think it's, we're making some progress, care of the physical plant of our town hall and our other things, and I think we're just gonna have to keep on, ongoing, and I'm very pleased that we are getting it done for ninety-two thousand as opposed to some three hundred thousand. Let's hope that continues. Thank you again, Michelle.
Mr. Plex, any comments on the town hall roof?
Nothing to add, but thank you to Michelle for all the hard work.
Anything, what's next?
So, next would be one thirty-five King Street, the future home of the Public Safety Building. We've made it through schematic design phase. They have sent it now out to be estimated. They anticipate the estimate, the estimate will be back the week of December third, and we're hoping, we're hoping our pricing comes in moderately well. As we know, there's been increases on most products, but we'll see where it shakes out. Both chiefs have done a great job of really, you know, cutting back on some of their, their wants and really focusing on the needs of today, not necessarily the future, which may or may not be a good thing, but we'll see where the prices come out. Any questions about one thirty-five? We'll move along to the library. I think many of you know the library project, the amphitheater project has been put out to bid several times. It's back on the street, they have scaled it back a bit, and those bids are due on December sixth. There's quite a bit of interest this time, which is exciting, so we're hoping we'll finally be able to ward that this winter and kick off the spring. And lastly, the R T F. I think many know that, you know, it's, it's taken a large effort to get that reopened. They're working up on the site, moving compacters. The, we had an update from the insurance company today that everything is being submitted for a baseline insurance price on Thursday. Our loader, that was a total loss, has already been appraised, and we're looking for, to replace that loader as soon as next week. So they're all on board, and they're expediting that for us, which will be great for the operation up there.
Okay, Mr. Grady?
Michelle, I wanna bounce back to King and Elm for a moment.
Sure.
So my question is this, I, I understand what you said about, and I've, I've seen the project, I've seen, I've been being part of it, but I do have one concern, you said something about, and I know the chiefs have worked like dogs to cut things back, you know, for a department that'll work for today. That makes me nervous, I just wanna put that out there, is, you know, Elm Street lasted for sixty-two years, and in that period of time, they've asked nothing of the town besides one point eight million over sixty-two years. I wanna throw that out there. I think we should also be investigating buildings that last for the future as well, and we ensure that our fire and police are as safe as they can be and secure as they can be, and in a building that will serve the public for years to come, not just something that we're putting Band-Aids on every other year like we did at forty-one for years. So I just, I wanna put that out there, and that's my personal opinion, is that we should also be looking at buildings for the future, what do they need to keep the town safe and do the jobs effectively, and to keep them safe as well? So I want that out there.
And that is something that we can certainly look into in the design development phase. So we're getting baseline right now, schematic design, design development is a little bit more involved. So when we come back before the board with the estimates, we can have a robust conversation of, you know, what that looks like for the town.
All right, I just didn't want that one left by the wayside in the interest of saving money. I want, you know, it's, again, I'm speaking for myself, is that I want the town safe, but I want them safe as well, and in a building that's habitable and will be habitable for some years to come.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, anyone have any other questions for Michelle? Mr. Plex?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is the local initiative program for forty-three Elm Street. Chris, you wanna take us through it?
So I have Cassandra Thayer joining us on this, is she up there yet? She there? Okay. There we go, she is.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi Cassandra, thank you for joining us.
Of course, my pleasure.
Sorry, we're running ahead of schedule.
That's okay, I was at the ready. So as a little bit of a background for this project, this unit is a condominium unit that is located at forty-three Elm Street, Unit Two. It has been owned by the Affordable Housing Trust since February of twenty twenty-three. At that time, it needed to go undergo extensive renovations, which they have been working on since that time with various different contractors. They're at the point now where they're getting ready to put the unit up on the lottery for affordable housing, but as a component of that, the local action unit paperwork needs to be signed off by the Select Board so that it can eventually be counted on the S H I for the town.
Okay.
Just, just the chair.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about this? It was very, very complicated for me because I've never really read any of this, a lot of, sounds, sounds like the federal government with all of the alphabet acronyms. Anyone have any questions? No?
I've worked with Cassandra, and it's been a work in progress, but it's nice to see it coming to fruition, isn't it?
It's very nice to see that, yes.
This, this had never been included, even though it was built with Habitat, it had never counted on the count of affordable housing stocks, so this actually puts it there for the first time, which will be exceptional.
Great, so you said it's a condo, what is the other unit of, of regular rental?
The.
Oh, they're both ownership?
Both of them are condos.
Okay.
So first of all.
And, and the other unit is not affordable housing?
It, it is, but it doesn't count at the town thing, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It was never originally included on the S H I when South Shore Habitat formed the project, so we're gonna look into potentially seeing if we can get that added on at a later date.
Okay, so Mr. Senior, the motion is to approve forty-three Elm Street, Unit Two.
For, to approve a local action unit designation.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion, please, to approve forty-three Elm Street, Unit Two, for the local action unit designation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Thank you, Cassandra, for all your work.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next up, Chris, you're gonna give us a quick update, financial update?
So I have good news, the town's free cash and the retained earnings of our two enterprise ones have been certified. So the free cash number for the general fund is one million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. The sewer funds retain earnings, which they're equivalent to free cash, is a million, three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the water funds retained earnings is a million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Those are all quite robust, they're in keeping with, with the ongoing efforts to, to keep things running conservatively, and so we're, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased it's gotten done as quickly as thoroughly as it did. So I also wanna thank not only our assistant accountant, Bank of Fells, who are keeping the tires to be in, all financial team, who's our, our inside firm, and that has been providing account services, they've really done a great job. Two principals, our finance directors and former finance directors, they've been great to work with, and it's been really seamless. I think it's not only got us certified easily through the state, but it's also helping build our, our internal strength as they help train our assistant account.
Okay. Mr. Grady?
I would just like to second, Chris, you know, in the absence of having a finance manager stepping up to the plate and bringing this in, so to wear a couple of hats, and I just wanna say to one board member, how much I appreciate it, I think the town does too, and just to say thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think, I think the designation of our free cash balance can't be underscored in how important it is to fund one-time costs that we get, unexpected expenses that might come from any department, over and above what our operational budget is, and we've had free cash most every year that I can remember in the last decade or so, and it allows us to fund capital, and it allows us to fund O P E B, and, you know, with our obligation to, I call it O P E B, it's, it's P E B now, post-employment benefits, and so it's, it's really an important thing that the town needs to understand that to have, have this money so that we can address, you know, circumstances out of our control, you know, maybe we need some for the R T F, maybe a department needs some, is, is really vital because without it, we wouldn't be able to, to take action on anything unexpected. So, well done, any, so no other comments on FY twenty-four?
No, we're heading to the final audit now, so that'll be, we're taking a time, the last pieces together, and the, the audit firms are already in, working. I'm not quite sure what they're called, they've been bought out twice, but they've been bought out, bought out again, so.
Okay.
So, so they're, they're in progress, I think everything's been smoothly in, work on twenty-five as well, and the two are, the audit firm, the accounting firm, has pivoted, and they're gonna be doing FY twenty-five as well, which will help they stay current.
Okay. So typically in December, Chris, we get a, a final, we get a report. Will that still be?
So there'll be a half a week, I don't know if you get it in December, probably like in January.
Okay, okay.
The last couple of years hasn't been finished until December, and then usually produced in January, so if, if that's the financial statement package.
Right, right, so I would just like to request that when it is produced, even if it's not on an agenda, because it's quite weighty to get through properly, if, if it could be distributed to the Select Board, even without a meeting in the offing?
Once we have it distributed, we usually sell electronic copies of every month, hard copy, and then company office, we've gotten printing them because they are pretty long.
Yeah.
If somebody wants our copy, I think we usually get a handful, and then they get it up the counter.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, as I mentioned, if we, we don't have a finance director, how long has it been, and when might we expect a new finance director?
So we do have a finance director, so the acting finance director, Chief Financial Officer, who's the town manager, so we, the, the last full-time finance director we had was Jeff Mullin, left us about this time, a year ago.
Those many years.
So we do have robust accounting services, that's all taking place, that's all working smoothly. Most of the job is accounting, so I'm comfortable that that's all being covered. And on the finance director side, starting to get Linda Cole, our treasure collector, a little bit more involved in some of this, she's gotten fully certified as a treasure collector, so I, she was involved in the, in the bond issue we did, and the affirmation of a triple-A rating all year this year, and I'm gonna bring her in more into the budgeting this cycle, so she can spread her, spread her knowledge a little bit more on that, and I'm hoping that will go out after the first of the year, and it's not been a good time to, to look, and we're likely to bring a firm on and then to, to go searching after January.
We need a finance director.
Well, the, the finance director authority is primarily to just kind of supervise the three elements of the finance, which is assessor, accounting, and the treasure collector, and they've all functioned independently for years and years, so even though the person's had titles, Mary Gallagher and Don, and Don Pyatt, for example, and even Jennifer Mullin, the, the, the primary function that a finance director held was to work on budget issues and bigger ticket items, for example, Jennifer, Don was very instrumental in, in, and Paula, when we worked on the budget, getting the budget put together for the first time, and Jennifer had past experience, which led to the, the special stabilization, so we're gonna be talking about that in a few minutes, so it just adds another level, and the challenge is there aren't a lot of really experienced people out there. The, there's been a dearth of people going to the field for a long time, we've talked about that before in the meetings, and it's, it's, at this point, I, I am excited that uh it's it's uh at this point, I I am excited that our staff has come stepped up and we may end up uh filling this man target than I initially thought, uh if our staff continues to to grow into their positions.
So the the reason I ask the question is, it is part of the purview of the town manager and you seem to be handling it um you know, well, so is it necessary to have a finance director and is the town spending money that clearly you're doing it within the um with your uh town manager responsibility, so maybe we don't need to have one, we can save the town taxpayers some money?
I think it's a discussion for all of you to have.
Right.
I I I will tell you that I think it would be, I think, as we get more and more complex of what we do, it it would probably be better in the long run to have another voice at the table, um and uh again, but want to see how it goes, so the town is indeed sending, well, not not sending all the money, because we have we have to retain and outside firm to help with the accounting, so it's not, it's not all, so uh and I have a uh I don't have that big a uh despite what some people say, so I can't wear that many hats, so but I'm 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 happy to do what I can during this. Again, uh how the long range I guess be a a conversation for.
Yeah.
I think I I would agree, someone of the town manager says that um after maybe special town meeting can be looked at and then it can be posted properly and then maybe get a firm to look at it, because one of the things the financial director does is also provide projections uh for the budget going forward and how you're going to budget things and if things are going to be on par going from year to year. Uh and it is, I think, too much for the town manager to be doing, and especially, they can go to the different meetings as well uh to be going to capital, be going to advisory board, to be going to the select board uh with their findings as well, so um I think it's something that needs to be filled, there's a number of other towns that are looking for it right now, if you go on the M M A website. Uh there's most certainly probably a dozen right now that are being looked at at other towns, so I think after special town meeting, it'd be something to look at, post, and then um if there's internal candidates, that's fine, but I think it should be posted and we should definitely get a firm to help out, because we have been successful in the last year in trying to get get one.
Thank you, David, that was a very good succinct answer.
Um um we're, yeah, we're not finished with comments here, Mr. Grady.
Well, I'm gonna bounce back to my thank you again, Chris, for taking on the hats, you know, I know, I agree with uh Mr. Farag, that there are a number of appointments open, and I'm sure when people look at our town at some points, especially considering our meeting on October twenty-ninth, they're not gonna bang down the door trying to get in here. So I appreciate all your efforts in trying to get people out and people in the door and in hiring the firms and in bringing what you brought in for free cash this year. So I'd love people to come get our finance director, I just I little concerned that if they do take a look at you know, performance like that, that uh you know, they may look at another town, and there are a lot of openings.
Mr. Plex?
Uh I think it's perfectly reasonable to take a look at it, um I hesitate to put too much on the town manager, because he is kind of the the respectfully, Chris, the backstop to a lot of different things, so if we start taking away things that are usually handled by staff, you you know, you're you end up backstopping an awful lot of things, open to the conversation, uh agree that it should probably happen after special town meeting.
And um you know, something we haven't, that hasn't been mentioned in this conversation, if we need one or not, the biggest part of the town budget is the school department and liaison liaising with the schools is critical um in terms of, you know, their operational budget, their contract negotiations, um how it impacts, you know, the town contracts and arbitrary and and negotiation. And it it is a full-time position, um having worked with both Dawn when I was on school committee and and with Jen and working with the the school department, um finance director, um the town finance director is a full-time job and um I appreciate everyone pitches in when you need to pitch in, but it's not a long-term solution for people to, you know, be being um jumping in and helping out on certain things, and it's not a long-term solution to have, you know, a a a handful, not a hint, not even a handful, a few consultants to come in to support. So I appreciate all the efforts to get, to keep the ship running, to keep the bills getting paid, to keep um our free cash getting certified and all of that, but um in my opinion, not having a finance director slash town accountant um is not a long-term solution.
How about keeping the sails full?
I'm sorry?
How about keeping the sails full in the process? That's what I'm, that's where I'm going.
Yeah.
You kept the wind in the sails.
Kept the wind in the sails, absolutely, okay.
Well, that was the reason I brought this up in the first place, because it's very crucial. Um I remember, I think, two a finance directors ago, when we worked on the finance, the school stabilization fund, and she was instrumental in that. I guess the reason I brought this up is to, um and I thank my fellow select board uh members for underlining the importance of this position. And the reason I ask the the question is, it's been a year and before that, it was, they were short-term, and I really think that we need to make sure that we have a good finance director and we don't fall in out a year or six months without it. That's the reason I brought that up, and I thank my fellow select board members for underlining the importance of having a finance director in our town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Senior, anything else? No? Okay, so next up is the town manager mid-cycle evaluation. Um as you can all see, our attorney Carolyn Murray is not present. Tonight, we had this um public evaluation scheduled. Um on August the twentieth, we reviewed the various evaluation instruments, as well as the schedule and the process, which was agreed upon by all members. The final evaluation tool was confirmed uh by the board to be used on their individual evaluations on September the fourth. So the agreed-upon schedule was to have each select board member submit their individual evaluations to town council by the sixth of November and schedule one-on-one meetings with Mr. Senior between November sixth and November eighteenth. And as of last Friday, November fifteenth, only two um select board members completed the process and the evaluation was going to proceed based on the work of those two select board members. Monday, November eighteenth, late morning, town council advised me that she had received an additional review on Sunday morning and two more on Monday morning. And after conferring with Mr. Grady as the vice chair, we felt that although our colleagues were tardy in their submission of the review, that allowing all of us to weigh in and delay this mid-cycle to our next meeting on December third was the path that we should take and council agreed. Town council had confirmed her availability for tonight months ago, but she's now made herself available for December third. So, Mr. Senior, although you're aware of these events, please accept my apologies that this review is not going to take place this evening as planned, as the process was not followed.
I second that.
Any comments, anyone? Okay. Next up, special town meeting.
They're receiving printed warrants today and we have a list, so it should be hitting everybody's mailboxes in the next days, I just ahead of schedule, uh and so I have, I don't actually, I didn't bring a hard copy with me, it looks like they always have it's nice and thick, so hopefully materials that you will see in it. So that's, that should be hitting everybody's mailbox over the next few days. And then the constable received his copies today and he's posting, this is required to in various places around town. Uh so we've seen him going around posting, that's what he's doing, that's monitoring town posting on his official warrant duties, um the advisory committee met uh last week and finished their work, uh they voted on the the last few amendments, including the amendments that select board had made. And they voted unanimously to to recommend Article I, which is the additional licenses uh for uh restaurants, alcohol licenses for restaurants, and some of the other tweaks that have been made in the capital plan and the one-time costs, so they voted on all of those, so that's all ready to go. And they'll meeting again on December fourth to set speakers, at this point, I don't know if they're planning on having specific speakers.
Yeah.
Uh uh that said, um they'll talk about it again on their next meeting, which is December fourth. We still, by the way, have set the pre-meeting meeting and out that mission, Tracy does, that if you have not already with the leaders, the chairs of various committees, the moderator and the town council, just to be ready in advance.
Okay. Any material changes from the last draft that we had?
Just that, I mean, I haven't, there's a town manager message in front, like there is, that's just one of your courage, you know, uh no, there there was no
And is there, there's not a select, no, not a select board, not not for this one, but for town.
There isn't, there isn't, uh so you, all the recommendations are
Yeah.
Uh well, I mean, except for the ones that advisory voted after the fact, they'll be in the motions.
They'll be in the motions, right?
So the only thing that's still uh I'm still assertive is and again, I'm gonna be for D O R to 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 determine this, that's what I'm the um the 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 special stabilization funds are an annual event, but they're been, they've they were voted as effectively an override, a debt override by the voters at one time, and it continues. So one of the questions, so so the the D O R rep that I spoke with on Monday, it's like, well, you have to can't appropriate the money until the fiscal year in which it happens, I'm like, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of these things, I said, and we we obviously allocate a budget in the year before it happens.
Right.
We do a lot of all that. So uh so there there if they've questioned whether or not the town could have allocated nine hundred thousand for the road fund, it was only eight hundred thousand actually in the fund
At the time?
Meeting. So there's a possibility that town had to re-vote a hundred thousand dollars. Or fortunately, seven-thirds of it's necessary.
Okay.
But I and I explained, I said, well, if the boards out, you know, voted to continue, they've already voted to extend this from F Y twenty-six. So it it we we're, I explained how our membership can must be accelerated, care programs, so you're gonna need to tap that money for a project.
Right.
Uh and uh so they're talking to me about how this works, so I I I I'm, I said, I don't need an answer on that piece until, you know, after the meeting, because they're scrambling just to get everybody's cash transfer money paid. Um so, but it 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 may be, it may be necessary to vote that a hundred thousand dollars a second time. Just to just to be clear, I'm hoping that by time I get to annual, that that we will have gotten a better process, because thought of having to do, that that there are ways around this. I've already thought of a few that can can work, because the money will be available regardless after July one, whether or not that can be voted officially. So there's ways to make it work anyway, uh but I'm hoping that the T L R finds a way to allow us to pre-s or or pre-allocate the money, I should say.
So are you talking about what essentially would be the second deposit into the funds, not not the first, the first deposit happened, yeah, okay.
So the the question is, can you, can you can you allocate the money a ahead of the year in which it is actually raised, and I
Okay.
And I thought, well, but it's the vote about the taxpayers, it's not like it's, you know, it's 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 real money that's going to be coming in, right?
Right.
Um so, well, here what they have to say, I mean, it was a good conversation, pleasant conversation.
Yeah.
Um so it'll be, we'll have to make, and again, that's not the most explainable, it's either, right, we've had some lengthy conversations with a different set of representatives in this year.
Right.
So, I mean, and I again, it's it's more processed, the the money's still there, money can still be spent, it just may be required.
Okay, um so I mean, we're talking about the warrant, so I can bring this up, so Article Three, the stabilization funds, um I watched Capital last night and, you know, they're they're looking and and hoping that their fifty thousand can be um increased uh more in line with what they feel historically has happened, um and historically, it's been up and down from zero up to six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the last six years, some with appropriations or expenditures out of capital at special town meeting, um and I I I don't fully understand their concern, but I understand why they wanted to have more money. And I, you know, I did get an email from the chair right before this meeting, asking me to bring it up to see if now that we have a certified free cash number, if there's any open to um increasing the move, uh you know, the amount moving to capital at special town meeting.
The the only caveat I would say at this point is that we're not gonna spend it at that special meeting, right, so so it going into the capital stabilization fund this fall um isn't necessary to effectuate any projects. Um and I I'm not saying anything that's not public, that the schools are, they're actively looking at their current spending and their future spending. And I I think there's some concerns there, I mean, cost of special education and 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 at this point, my recommendation would be to leave things a little flexible, um so at annual time, maybe that all the allocation can happen, right, if there's extra money to go into capital, great, that's why the the top layers of the plan, in the in the in our policy anyway, you know, that, at the same time, I think there's some unanswered questions about what the school might need for some for some gaps and um I I and that has not fully set itself out, so it it wouldn't be good, again, I'm hoping things will be fine, at the same time, since we're not spending the money this fall, whether it's in the capital stabilization fund now or not, it can still be put there in the spring and still be spent on capital. Because it's not gonna be spent between December and then, uh it'll just it'll just be there, it'll be on the town's books.
Right.
But it won't be spent anywhere, because it it can't be spent in this town meeting often.
Okay, so you're inclined at this point to keep it at fifty?
Again, if you want to go to a hundred, I think that would be okay, I I don't know if that's, you know, if that makes them happier, but you, I think going to a hundred would be okay.
I I think it would make them happier.
I i if the board is, if if board wants to do that, I I think it's fine, beyond that, though, I I think keeping a level of flexibility is just good. Um eh just because, again, the the R T F, the R T F is an example, um but not the only one, and um with this concern about the, you know, how we have to allocate money from the special kind of stabilization, too, I want to make sure that all the money is going to be there for I was gonna move, um so, again, I think just keeping a degree of flexibility for the springs is is good, especially since the money isn't gonna be spent at the special meeting.
Okay, so um did advisory, our, the last draft had advisory was gonna recommend project two, this capital um at special town meeting, did they change that?
They voted for the fifty.
They voted for the fifty, so then they would have to come back, so what would be a mechanism on town floor that we could?
Well, again, it could be in the motions, if the select board directs me to put a hundred thousand dollars, it will appear in the motion, because you're you're allowed to. The 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 numbers that show the warrant are advisory numbers, and when I say that, it's small letters.
Yeah, yeah.
And and they can be amended, um and so if the select board says, no, we really want to do a hundred, we can, I mean, for sure we can, that I can, when I draft the motions, just five thousand.
We'll just put it up, okay.
Do capital have an amount that they were looking for, because I did see the meeting, but I didn't catch every minute of it.
Well, um Ms. Dugan indicated that she had had conversation for up to a hundred thousand, and I think that they were looking for two hundred thousand. Um and again, as as Mr. Senior said, there's there's no projects um of of substance, you know, for this special town meeting, it's just more of the historical practice to sustain the historical practice, and again, the amounts over time have been from what I could see, we're two fifty up to six twenty-five six twenty-five, six seventy-five, something like that. There was no special town meeting in twenty twenty, so there was no allocation because of COVID, and then there was one year between uh twenty twenty-three and twenty seventeen, where there was no allocation into capital at special town meeting, so um do we have one more meeting to talk about it? When are the motions drafted?
Yeah, I I'm gonna draft something starting next week, so you can see them at the December third meeting and uh the town council Murray is working on too, because she has to there's a complicated motion about the 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 accessory dwelling units, because the, there's different there's different voting requirements for the two elements of it, the 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 state one and the local one are different, one is the majority was two-thirds, so she's gonna be drafting those, the other ones are fairly simple, so I I can, I I'll have those for you for the third and then um so you have the meeting on the third before the ninth, so you can make decisions.
Can I ask for a sense of the board on on what their thoughts are on this topic? Mr. Farag?
I'd like to, I don't know if capital budget has another reading in in between, that they could give us a number specifically that they were looking for, that we could either go with or not go with, but I would suggest going north of fifty thousand for sure. Um because even if it's just sitting there, then they know at least it's there, so that the projects that'll come in in the in the spring, um at least they have that amount to allocate, so I'd like to hear from capital budget, but I would definitely be in favor of going north of fifty thousand.
Mr. Plex?
I don't have a strong opinion at this point, I agree with Mr. Farag, I just don't know how far north I would go uh absent direct input from capital budget.
I I do think they're gonna have another meeting, I'm not sure if it's before our December third meeting or after. Um they are going to accelerate their spring process, they're going to start working with all of the town departments, they've assigned liaisons to all the different town departments to start working on it now. With all of the town departments, they've assigned liaisons to all the different town departments to start working on it now. So that, um, they don't get down to, you know, two weeks before town meeting and still hearing the details on things, um. They, you know, they want it to be wrapped up. They want quite, you know, um, and, and their work, the liaisons will be working with the town departments. To get most of the questions that the committee will ask answered before they present. So that departments aren't going to capital budget multiple times, like more, more than they need to. Um, yeah, I, 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 I would be comfortable somewhere, you know, in between a hundred. Hundred and fifty, something like that. Um, it. But why don't, and Mr. Grady, do you have any comments?
I would be comfortable. You know, we have the unexpected expenses like the RTF, like Chris just said, things like that coming up. Um, I'd be comfortable if we set our parameters, set it at a hundred. Town manager's comfortable with that. And then we have our own reserve. I would do the hundred. I'd, I'd be content with that.
Mr. Creighton?
I'd go with a one hundred. I have great respect for capital budget and I'm looking forward to hearing what their take. But I understand that, um, in their interim, we need to have some amount of money and I think a hundred is inappropriate.
Yeah. Um. Is it inappropriate to read the email that I received from the chair of capital budget this evening on this topic? Do you guys want to hear it? Okay. So from Susan Franklin. Um, she was talking about the free cash number, which Mr. Senior told us. For the anticipation that capital requests will once again largely exceed the appropriation to capital budget. We request that the select board either appropriate the maximum amount practical from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Or communicate to us a plan slash intention for what capital expenditures would be made out of free cash. This would provide capital budget a clearer understanding of what projects are intended to fit within the given appropriation. Um, so. Much more eloquent than I said it. I, I think the challenge is that we don't have. As of this moment, a list of capital expenditures that we would need free cash for other than quote RTF. And we don't know what that's going to be. And, um. So I don't think that we can provide for them. It's not like we're saying, okay, well, we want to do this or we want to do that and, and we're going to surprise everybody with it. We haven't even talked about any additional capital expenditures. So, uh, we, we can't do that. So, um. I mean, if everybody's comfortable with a hundred, I'm okay voting for a hundred tonight so that they know. Or would people like to defer?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. So Mr. Grady just made a motion to approve a hundred thousand dollars to the capital.
Again, we don't know what we have for capital projects coming up. There's nothing in the pipeline, is there?
Well, there is a ten-year capital plan and, um, and so they will start vetting and they, 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 you know. Um, I'll take the easy ones. The police chief will go through what equipment needs to be replaced, what cruisers need to be replaced, what vehicles I T will go. Excuse me, will go through, you know, um, what, uh, I T needs are going to be, what digital learning. Uh, replacements and, and new leases need to happen. The schools will have bus leases that they will need to, uh, accommodate. Um, so there are pretty standard annual things.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I'm not. I don't have committed to memory some of the bigger ticket items. I know for the schools, Nick Berardi has quite a comprehensive list. A priority list of, uh, what needs to be done with the Osford roof. We've all heard about the middle high school fire alarm system. Which is going to need to be done. Otherwise we'll have another building, um, that's not up to code. So.
Um, so at the moment, my motion stands.
Okay. So we have a motion for a hundred thousand dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Creighton, second. Uh, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay. And if we find between now and the time the, the motions are drafted. That there's a little bit more room, we can make that change then, but at least they know that we listen to them and, um.
One more question on this. That's. It, it's, um, with free cash, isn't there a certain percentage that we try and keep in free cash based upon in order to get our triple A bond rating? That they, that they look at, that they want so much in free cash?
And it's actually our total reserves, uh, total reserves, it's our reserve. So. Uh, it tends to really be the money made on our very stabilization funds. Um.
Okay.
Because free cash is. It, it just disappears. The, the stabilization funds live. Uh, so typically. Uh, we don't, we, we, we don't necessarily spend all of it. Or sometimes we'll roll it through from one year and the next, which we did this past year, a small amount. It, it really just depends here where it goes. Sometimes I'll go with the generals. We have one, my is general stabilization fund because we have to. Um, though, uh, you know, the school stabilization, the special head stabilization fund has been depleted significantly. Um, that might be a place that needs some, some money. Uh, and, uh.
So it's just considered a part of the reserves, like a piece of the puzzle. So if we move money from free cash to stabilization, then when it's not, okay, good. That's.
Yeah, it kind of puns the reserves.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um. So. That was really the only update, other than that zoning issue that you said.
And then, uh, you do have a note here that, um, so the school feasibility study is going to require another hundred thousand dollars for the actual. Design. So fifteen thousand that they, we have been told was for the project manager to come with the process. But this, uh, the M S B is now seeking, uh, uh, asking us to allocate another hundred for, um, the actual design. Uh, and that's, I think capital funded that, I think.
They did. So, yeah.
Uh, the only thing that you would, would be to add that to the capital.
Right. So, okay, so, um. No, this will come out of the school stabilization fund. Um, so, and the mechanics of that also will have to change because there's, isn't there very specific language? For the motion on town meeting floor for the M S B A? I, I received an email that.
We'll have to work through that.
Through that because now it's all lumped in with capital.
If we have to break it out as a separate part of the motion, we do that. It's, it's fine.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do whatever we need to do to comply with M S P.
Okay. So this hundred thousand dollars is an M S B A requirement. Um, and, um. It will come out of the school stabilization fund. So do I have a motion to add one hundred thousand dollars? To the school stabilization expenditure for the Osford School Roof Project?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Creighton moved it. Mr. Grady seconded it. Roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Um, we skipped over discussion of select board preparation for special town meeting and speakers. Um. I don't, I don't know. Um, there's nothing really meaty for us, you know? We, we don't, we're not advocating like we did a year ago with all the, the special projects. Is there, is there anything that any individual would like to get up and sign on on town meeting floor?
I will look at them again. I'll email if there's any specific.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got to go through the warrants as well, because if there's any come open police and fire. I want to speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah. And also, um. Well, that's it right now, but I'll go through the one. I'll give you an update on that.
Okay. So if, if anyone after they review the warrant has a particular, um, section that they would like to, to get up on town meeting floor and speak to. Just email me and copy and press senior. Is that fine?
Sure. I will make sure if the bottom has it, yeah, the conversation.
Right, right. Um, well, I know, I know, for example, petitioning the legislature for additional all alcohol annual licenses, I will speak to. Okay, we'll get up to speak to. And, um, I was going to put it in select board comments, but it is in the warrant, so we can talk about it. I did reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and explained what we were doing. They responded, um. Darrell and Evans responded, said Larry Corthol is the president. He has not yet responded. I said, please call me with any questions. I advised him that we were looking to have a public forum on December third at six thirty here before our meeting. Um, at Mr. Creighton's request. So I certainly hope he shows, he comes and supports. Um, and I also emailed, um. Senator Patrick O'Connor and Representative Joan Moschino, uh, of what we were doing because. Uh, once, once this gets through special town meeting floor, then we will need to, um. Provide documentation to them and Patrick O'Connor responded today that, uh, he will work to, to push this and, and. And support us as best as he can.
If I can add, and I shared with the son, if they were planning director today, that's two and a half, sir. Um, to see if she can get some other, uh, materials from the M A P C to follow the planning grants about the economy fatality of restaurants. And those have been some studies in the region over the last ten years and that how, how we're having a, 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 alcohol license candidate with restaurants. Liability and how poor restaurants are on the level of commerce. She's reaching out to, to them and I know that we have. A restaurateur or two in town might, I, I, I have to get their information. Tracy is on the contact information. Well, I'll reach out to people who are. Were helping fund some restaurants who might also be able to speak that night, uh, at the food, at the food.
Okay. I think, um, well, yeah, okay, that, that would be great. Okay.
It's not many.
So, um, I believe that's it on the town warrant? Yes. Okay. So we'll move on to town manager update.
I have, uh, three things. Uh, first, I want to thank everybody who serves on board committee. Uh, last week is the town's annual celebration of board committee service. I'll thank, um, all those who, who serve period and thank all those who came. And particularly, I want to thank Megan. James and Maria Spitzer for, for leading the, uh, the presentation and putting the whole. Evening together and Michelle for standing in for me. Cause I was home feeling pretty awful on Thursday. So. Thank you, Michelle, for standing in and, and I'm seeing that. So, and again, thank you to everyone who serves. Makes everything known. Um, the, uh, registration for the annual turkey trot Thanksgiving Day is open. Uh, rain or shine, it takes place first thing on Thanksgiving morning. If you'd like to run and sign up now. Cohasset Recreation is website. You can get to it from the town's website or just Google Cohasset Recreation. Uh, there's definitely spots available, about six hundred folks going to Ted Carroll have registered. So there's still room if you want to race or a turkey hat, whatever you want to do. Um, and I just also want to say, because we won't have another meeting before, a happy Thanksgiving, uh, to everyone in town and to the board. Uh, I hope, uh, it is a very healthy, healthy and happy season.
Thank you. Go skippers. Um, so we'll start with select board comments. Mr. Farag, we'll start with you.
No comments for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Creighton?
Uh, no comments, uh, for now.
For now, tonight or for now, this moment?
Uh, for this, this moment there. When we go over the, the minutes, I will have some comments, but.
Okay. Well, yeah, we're not on the minutes. Okay. Um, Mr. Plex?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, I've got PTSD. So I'm gonna just, I'd like to apologize to town of Cohasset. For our performance on our, our October twenty-ninth. Um. You know, I'd also like to apologize to town manager for being the recipient of quite a bit of that, uh, unprofessionalism. And it's bothered me ever since. I don't think that's how a board should conduct himself, ourselves in public. We represent the town. And things that is best said should be said in private or in person. Um, and I'm still. Basically disgusted at the way we comported ourselves. And so I do want to apologize for anybody who was watching, anybody who read about it. And anybody who saw it. And. I just hope something like that never happens again. Um, I would not want to be part of that. And again, so my apologies to the recipient, town manager of quite a bit of it. And, uh, ended the town was the recipient. Of, um, this board's behavior and comportment. So that's just, I wanted to get that off my chest.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to update the board that tomorrow night. Here at Wocup Commons, the Cohasset Harbor Committee is hosting an open meeting to talk about twenty twenty-five harbor committee. Proposed priorities, the James Burke and Cohasset Harbor resilience C Z M findings. The twenty twenty-four harbor recreation survey summary, the captain's walk updates and, and any other topics. Uh, it's here at seven o'clock. Is this the point room?
The point room's a.
This small conference room? They have a big crowd. We're going to have to move.
I would have thought that, I, 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 they may have misnamed.
Misnamed the room. The, okay. So, um, uh, um, it's on my calendar to go and, um, looking forward to it, to, to hearing about what's going on. Um, I'm just going to recap a, a little bit about capital budget that we did not discuss. So in, and I think Chris is at soft write, is that our accounting? Software, um, so every appropriation that's made at, at town meeting or special town meeting. Gets a project number and account number and, and goes into the soft write report for what was appropriated. And then what gets expended on that particular project. And it's specific to the project, to the department. And it. It stayed, the money stays there until it moves. Isn't that correct? So if there's a project that was for fifty thousand dollars and it ended up being only forty-five thousand dollars until the five thousand dollars. Is repositioned back to the capital fund, it stays in that, that appropriation.
That's correct.
So in addition to, you know, the hundred thousand dollars tonight, they're going to do with Michelle's help. And, um, God bless her. She remembers a lot of the projects going back, I think, twen- to twenty fifteen. Um, they're going to go back and, and clean up, clean up that ledger and, um, there could be additional money in that for capital, which is a positive thing.
Yeah, that, that has, that has stuck up about the annual, uh, the last couple of years.
Yeah. Yep. So, um, and, and there's new people on the capital budget committee who, who are, who are looking into that. Um, and. I wasn't going to say anything, but, but I'm going to say anything, I'm going to say this. I, I'm very disappointed that, um. The majority of the select board could not comply with the schedule and process for the town manager mid-cycle evaluation. It's the one work product that, um, is required, um, of all of us. And we had sufficient time to get it done. Um, the form was online in the OneDrive. The schedule was online in the OneDrive. And, uh, I'm disappointed and, um. Two of us got it done and, and three did not. And I hope that as we head into next year. Um, that this type of responsibility is, is taken a bit more seriously. Okay, next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes for October twenty-ninth. Twenty twenty-four, which were deferred from the last meeting. There were two sets. There was the original set back in the. Packet. And then there was a revision that was added in yesterday.
Yes, I mean, speak on it. I made the revisions, uh, that were sent out the other day and I tried to be expeditious and judicious in language to try and. Uh, keep it as simple as possible to reflect the meeting. Um, if anyone has any edits, they can certainly add them.
Yes, I look at this. And having reviewed. Tape of that meeting and I suggest that anybody take a look at that and see what actually happened. What happened is. I read a email letter to the town manager and the select. And as I was reading it, the town manager looked at the chair of the meeting and made a. Universally recognized signal across his throat saying, cut it. That point. The chair. Interrupted me. Spoke over me. And then the town manager interrupted me and spoke over me. That entire time I did absolutely nothing but continue to read the letter. That had already been sent to each member of the board and the town manager. There was no other further action on my part. At a certain point, the town manager threw out a partisan slur. Directed at me, I assume. Stood up and stormed out of the meeting. That is what happened. That is what is clearly indicated if you look at the tape. These minutes do not reflect them. So, um, a couple of issues on this, what we're talking about now is, is this. Accurate. These minutes do not reflect them. And I think that we need to send these back to have them reflected. And we may wish to include a tape of the disputed things in here. So. And if anybody had can, can show anything that my description is not spot on accurate of the behavior. That I was subject to as a select board comment. And I might add. The select board comment period is a period for a select board member to comment. It is not a discussion. It is for them to make that. So number one, there's two issues. Number one, I was. Number one, I was spoken over, attempted to be silenced, politically insulted, all right, in a series of very unprofessional things. And I think these minutes need to be sent back. And, and an independent third party needs to look at the tape and then make um, and it has to be an independent third party, not under somebody's supervision, and make it reflect accurately. And anybody at home who's looking at this, I urge you to look yourself at this and you will see that I'm not exaggerating. I am giving a clear factual
Okay.
discussion of what happened.
Okay, heard. Um, I would just comment that you've had two meetings, these minutes were presented on November the sixth. Um, and Mr. Farag asked for them to be delayed. And if you had any comments or edits to it, you have, you've had two meetings to get those edits or comments to Mr. Farag, who is the clerk, and to Tracy, who is the scribe. And, and now to delay them yet again, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate. Um, and I did have every right under Robert's Rules of Order to interrupt you and have a point of order. I didn't say point of order, but I did have every right to do that. So I did check with town council, who has viewed the tape and indicated that I was within my rights to interrupt you.
And why, and I would reiterate my request that we have an independent third party. And if you did do that, I appreciate that you, sir, and why was I not informed of this?
I'm informing you now.
And when did you meet with the town manager?
I didn't meet with the town manager.
Or talk to the town?
I didn't talk to the town manager. I said, no, I said I spoke to town council.
Town council, that's, I meant town council.
After she viewed, viewed the tape.
I remember that.
I don't remember that, when it was sometime between that meeting and this meeting.
Well, I think that.
And I, I don't, I don't report out to anybody my conversations with town council. So we have minutes from, the original minutes from October twenty ninth, we have amended minutes that were distributed yet, yesterday. Are there any further comments?
I would say this, I think I would, again, I'm kind of disheartened that we're not on the same page as to what happened at that meeting. It was horrible. Um, and this seems, the feedback I've received just alone is an indication that this is why I would go with the first set of minutes, I had no amendments, I don't want to change them in any way, manner or form. What happened in that meeting, happened in that meeting. And Tracy was at that meeting and I think everything that was taken down should be left just the way it is. Uh, I don't believe that the meeting needs updates on, I'm gonna say the people that disagreed or had their moments to go at the town manager at the town um, and or to amend them to suit their own needs. Again, I'm going by my own feedback, I think if anybody's received feedback, then they would look at the first set and they look at the second set and say quite a bit of disparity, I think I'll go with the first.
Let me speak on this. I will stand on the edits I made and that they are judicious and certainly kept the language. And since it's about the fourth or fifth time tonight, Mr. Grady has brought up October the twenty ninth and keeps bringing it up, excuse me, I'm talking, Mr. Grady.
Don't block me, mister, because I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up anytime I want.
You're out of order.
Yep, and I'll stay out of order.
Paul, let him speak.
Well, if you're out of order, you can, you can stay out of order somewhere else.
Yeah.
This is a problem. You're the problem, Paul.
Am I?
Yeah, you are.
Good.
So what I received from people, I was exactly, exactly opposite from what Mr. Grady has said. I tried to do the minutes in expeditious way. I've put them, the minutes that Mr. Grady talks about would have merely whitewashed the events of October the twenty ninth and not spoken about anything and that would not accurately reflect them. So I did my job as clerk to try and keep it as straight as possible, to call the balls and strikes as they were, were. And in fact, there's less adjectives or language that is in there than could have been. And so if there was any edits by anybody, I certainly would ask for them. Um, but I stand on the minutes that I have edited uh, to at least accurately reflect in some manner what had happened on October the twenty ninth. I realize that the tape is out there, so if people want to see the full version, they can. But the minutes only need to uh, accurately reflect what happened at the meeting. They don't have to be a blow by blow of what happened in the meeting or be a stenographer's uh, account of it. So I stand on that and I, and I'm sorry, but I, I take the comments from Mr. Grady saying that these are unprofessional or otherwise, I, I think he owes if, since he's in the board of apologizing, he should apologize to me.
Okay, Mr. Plex.
Smile all you want, Mr.
Oh, I'm laughing.
Good. Let the record reflect Mr. Grady is, is laughing at that.
Mr. Plex, do you have a perspective?
Uh, I would like to suggest, we're starting to sound an awful lot like we did, and I know we don't like coming back to it, but we did sound pretty terrible on October twenty ninth and we're starting to get there again. The first set of minutes, uh, I think accurately described what happened. It got pretty awful. And we do have the video online for all to see if anybody really wants to go blow by blow. But I would prefer that we stick with the original because I think it appropriately characterizes what happened as pretty darn awful. And that sounds to me like an apology from the select board to the town for the way we all behaved that night. So I'm in favor of the original and if people want the detail, they've got the tape.
Great.
I stand by my earlier comments. And if there are apologies in order, I think we know that those people who were unprofessional and I was not one of them.
Um, this is, we're talking.
I am, I am, you allowed everybody else to editorialize on it.
But we're talking about the minutes.
Yes, but the other people were talking about other thing and you allowed that. And again, this is another example of selectively shutting off debate and allowing positions that you agree. And that is not the proper role of the chairman of Robert's Rules of Order.
Jack, this is you trying to barge in.
Um, I, please don't speak over me, Mr. Plex.
You barged in, I'm barging in, okay?
No, I asked the chair for permission to speak. And she confirmed that I asked the chair to permission to speak and you weren't speaking at the time. Um, so I'm not speaking over you. Again, I think that the tape record will clearly show that my previous discussion was spot on accurate and was not sensationalized. And we should keep in mind that the minutes are used to a record officially. And I do know in cases in the past that the position has been taken that after the minutes have been voted, tapes are destroyed. And I know tapes have been destroyed, it's all the way back to when I was on Concom. Tapes were ordered destroyed. So the official record in, I, my understanding is sometimes it is said that this written record is, becomes the official record and the tape is not. And so what I'm saying, if that is the case, then we need an independent third party to go over these particular things and put a efficient, dispassionate, accurate description of what happened. Otherwise, we are um, approving something that we all know to be incorrect. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
If we preserve the tape?
Well, I mean, you can, you can go on the archive and there's, there's videos back to twenty, twenty fifteen.
So we can preserve that tape.
Right, there, so, so I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion, so we have two sets of minutes in the packet to vote on. We have the original minutes of the select board meeting of uh, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve the original minutes of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, do you mean October twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth, yes, I apologize, the twenty ninth.
So I sec- I second the motion, subject to the clarification that we're talking about the minutes of October twenty ninth.
Twenty nine.
Okay, I'll rephrase the motion, do I have a motion to approve the original minutes of October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second, uh, roll call, all in favor?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Sad day for truth.
No, no, wait a minute, we made a motion on the edits.
Right.
Edit it and see what people.
I, I was about to go there when, when Mr. Creighton made that, that comment. Um, so now there is um, also in the packet, edited minutes from October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve the edited minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? So there's no second, so there's no vote. So as of this moment, the original minutes of October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four um, are approved. Um, we do have one topic that is not reasonably anticipated that Mr. Senior um, briefly spoke about at the beginning of the meeting regarding we need to vote on the uh, FY twenty five school stabilization fund and road and sidewalk stabilization fund, correct?
Correct, if, if you would uh, move to continue them both for the fiscal year twenty five, much like you did for twenty six already, uh, that would allow us to, to move forward with you.
Okay, and, and um, at the same levels of the first with no increase in.
That, that, and not been an intention.
Increase for the, okay, so can I have a motion to approve the F, for FY twenty five, the school stabilization fund at one point five million and the road and sidewalk stabilization fund at eight hundred thousand?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you, so um, as mentioned before, our next meeting is December third, seven o'clock, six thirty for a public forum. And I'll get with Chris and Kevin, we can do a little publicity for that, I'll see if the chamber will show up. Um, and then we have special time meeting on December ninth, do I have a motion to adjourn at eight twenty three?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.